All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council, Monday, January 24th, special city meeting. So we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck.
Here.
Counselor Lenhart.
Here.
Counselor Harvey.
Here.
Counselor Cry.
Here.
Counselor Brian. Counselor Breaman.
Yes. All right, we've got one agenda item on our agenda tonight. That's where, do we have to approve? The meeting or the agenda? We don't have that on there.
My move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Counselor Lenhart.
Yes.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Counselor Brian.
Yes.
Counselor Breaman.
Yes.
Counselor Buck.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move on to our first agenda item. It's resolution 2022 oh two, a resolution authorizing the creation of a Fruita housing authority. And Dan is going to be, Karis is going to be presenting on this.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Again, my name is Dan Karas. I'm the planning director for the record. I have three attachments in this, in this packet. We've got the cover sheet, the certification of the petition, and then the sample and proposed resolution that is before the council for action this evening. I wanted to go through just to kind of a little bit of like sort of how we arrived at where we're at today and kind of bifurcate, you know, the work that we've been doing with the necessary things that are under the statute that have to be performed. And really in this cover sheet, that is spelled out pretty specifically with like kind of a three step process, 25 signatures of residents within the city of Fruta, and then specific notice, which was at least 10 days, which was conducted on the 7th of January, noticed for the 24th of this evening, 2020, and then some specific findings. Obviously, you can find any of the pertinent statute citations under the petition. And we've had the statute present in most, if not all, of the conversations that have been pertinent to the creation of the housing authority. Wanted to make one kind of quick note for the record. Obviously, you know, will be having a conversation about, about like how the housing authority could potentially function as a part of this next workshop discussion. But specific to this hearing, you know, the statute is laid out in detail. It's not specific to anything that's mentioned in the charter whatsoever, but obviously this petition that that was circulated, was circulated after that December 21st meeting where we received direction from council to put the things in motion to, to formally create a housing authority or the process by which you do so. So that, that petition, which the names that of those that signed are not specifically in the packet, certification thereof is in, is in the packet from the clerk's office. Those, all of those signatures came out of, out of my, my office per se. So we solicited folks that have been, you know, part of the housing work and then certainly mentioned it to boards and commissions. But not your typical petition process, I think, is what I'm, what I'm trying to do there. And all that does is initiate a public hearing process. By the way, the clerk's office verifies those signatures and then sets a hearing date with that 10 day threshold. So that's why we're here today. In this cover sheet, you know, there's kind of one other specific finding that needs to take place that's pertinent to the statute, and that's this whole, you know, lack of safe sanitary dwelling accommodations in the city of, and available to the inhabitants there. That, that sort of, when I look at that, I think about like approval criteria, so to speak. But, you know, it doesn't really define it in any great detail. But as I've kind of surveyed the landscape with regards to this particular topic and certainly visited with our manager and council on this, what I hear in that is that, you know, there's not accessible housing available to the residents in Fruta, which is why we specifically stated some of those bulleted points that, that just show how that chasm has been created over time. And we benchmarked that with 2015 to present date, which certainly seems to show that this kind of widening of availability and one's ability or one's head of household or households ability to gain access in both the for rent and for sale market. It's no secret that we have really just like one type of housing unit in, that makes up the vast percentage and majority of the housing that's available in Fruta. So there's no real bar by way we can measure this as far as like, if it's 51%, then you meet this criteria. This is really just the analysis that, that is available at any given time that can justify the pursuit of what I consider to be multiple tools that are at our fingertips, so to speak, to support, you know, garnering greater access to housing in our community. And I don't know if there's anything that, that Mr. Bennett or Mary Elizabeth would like to add to that. But, you know, when, when I think about, you know, whether or not that particular citation is satisfied as a finding, I really think about these, these bullet points because they're not anecdotal. And a lot of the conversations that we've had about people trying to get housing have not been backed up by specific data, but yet like the information that we have coming out of EPS and that is presented to council certainly justifies a significant chasm in our for sale and our significant kind of tightening or a lack of inventory for the for rent market, which is, you know, two things that would be, you know, directly supported by the creation of a house authority if it is met with some, some financial support. That being said, in the statute, which is when we, when we provided the options available to council, we do have the approve slash deny, which is a part of, a part of the resolution that's in the packet. In the actual statute itself, there's really three paths available. It's obviously approved, deny. But there was a petition process and with any petition process, there's likely to be signatures signed and then a vote of the people if denied. Because the signatures are essentially setting the date of citizens within the city that justify the need for a housing authority. So just want to put that on the record. You know, it's been in the statutes that have been available in the, in the packets for the last month, month and a half that we've been talking about it. But I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that. And I don't have anything else to add specifically, obviously, the bylaw discussion with regards to the resolution creating a housing authority don't really take place until the housing authority is, is appointed and formed on paper. We envision and certainly think that it would be appropriate that, that the housing authority board has its own bylaws. But that doesn't mean that the council can't take part in forming and shaping what those look like. You know, just, just as, as an aside, you know, we, we envision that, I think, as staff that, you know, when the, when the mayor and council ratifies appointments, that, you know, the, the shaping of those bylaws take place. And that, that conversation about where you're at in the process and what your expectations are for the housing authority, I think are going to be pretty cemented in just based off of the fact that you're going to let them know that the council's likely going to be drafting those. So the newly appointed Housing Authority Board can act on it. It's my understanding that, and I might have asked Mary Elizabeth to expand upon this. There's no real necessity that the Housing Authority Board has to act on their bylaws the first day that they're actually seated. You know, all they need to be is a board and have a hearing publicly notified or noticed. And then they can certainly take steps to, with the council to those bylaws, if that's necessary. Or we can certainly just have a more detailed discussion about how we want that to happen at the workshop if this is approved. But with that, I've nothing else to add.
All right. Thank you, Dan. With that, do we need to open this up to our public comment? Okay. All right. With that, we're going to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, do we have anybody online as well? So if there's anybody online that would like to speak.
Saying none, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to council. So are there any questions on this item? Matthew?
Is it that obvious?
Yeah.
It's not a question. It's more of a comment. And I, you know, understand from previous meetings that this is just one of the tools in the toolbox that we can use to help address attainable housing, but we've now made multiple policy changes. We don't understand the ramifications of those yet, and I'm a little hesitant to go down a path that would impose a fee on every real estate transaction, which is what we're talking about with creating of this.
Mary Elizabeth, you're going to need the mic.
Sorry about that. It's actually two separate issues, just to be clear. Forming the, forming the housing authority did not necessarily mean that a fee will or will not be.
I understand that, but that's the direction that we've been heading in terms of conversation. And as stated, we will have influence over the authority. And two, we're now creating another governmental agency without a means of dismantling it and without giving clear direction of the methodology moving forward. So I'm not saying no to a housing authority. I just have concerns. I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a bit.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. Does anybody else have comments? Go ahead, Lori.
Very similar comments, actually. And I've, you know, had discussions with Mike over it and lost sleep over it because I think the intention is good and I like the, I like where we're headed with the housing assistance, the, the down payment assistance piece. I don't like that it opens up something, and I'm, I'm going to throw muse out there because we know it's there. A project like that, that has gained so much traction.
Sorry to interrupt, Lori. We do need to not, yeah, we can't talk about projects or applications.
In the future, we have, because this, if this fee passes, this is a group that will control a lot of money. A lot of money brings questionable intentions, I think, from people with always an interest, right? I don't think you're going to get these people who, I think you're going to have people with an agenda. And I'm afraid that the agenda is going to drive projects that may not be in the best interest of what we're, we're trying to solve workforce. If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we're looking at is workforce housing. Some of these other projects that may or may not come in, I don't think hit workforce housing. I think it hits something else. And to that point, we're setting up something that we have no control over. I mean, I'll be long gone. You'll be long gone. You'll be long gone. It'll be up to you three and three new people to decide the direction of it. And even at that, they come up with their own bylaws. I, I don't know. I, I guess I'm not saying no either, but I'm saying this has serious potential to blow up and be completely bastardized. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
So do we, I suppose this is aimed at Mary Elizabeth or Mike or anybody that, do we have, once we set this ball rolling and create this child that is this housing authority, do we have authority down the road to say, pull the reins back, make a new ordinance, sort of change the direction or the mission or absolve it or anything like that?
I'll answer part of that. And then, and then if you want to add to it, creating the authority on, on paper creates the ability for then, for council to have full control over appointing people or not in the future. I, you know, so until you appoint people and until bylaws are created and, and, and approved by that authority, there's, there's no function that, that a group can do and tell you do that. But yes, once you do that, I mean, they, it's, it is a separate entity, as mentioned. And as we've discussed, you know, all along the way. As far as, I have to ask Mary Elizabeth on, you know, once you've appointed a group and they're functioning, what, what, what can happen at that point in time?
Sure. And again, there, I think Mike's exactly right. You're, you are creating something on paper first. And it is only going to have the teeth and abilities that council kind of pushes its way. So if, for instance, you created this and six months from now, you haven't appointed a board yet, well, it's not doing anything. You know, it has no power. If, I know you guys have been talking about the real estate transfer fee. If that weren't to be adopted, then, you know, this doesn't have that as a funding source. You guys would be, you know, part of that, how this was funded. I think as Dan mentioned earlier, you know, we've heard from you guys that you'd like to have some input on like the bylaws and how this might function. So even though it's adopted by this board, that doesn't mean that you guys don't have any say in, you know, how you'd like that to, direction to go. And then also as far as the makeup of the board, there's nothing in the statute that says that a council member can't be on it. You know, or two, and I think we've talked about that before as well. So there's certainly checks and balances there. And, and you know, if you, by creating the authority, as Mike said, you've created an avenue, another, you know, a statutorily allowed mechanism for helping out with the housing issue. And as a municipality, you have a lot of limitations through taper and through other things that you can't do. And this is just a different way of being able to even do down payment assistance and do some of these other programs and run it through the housing authority. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't see it as like you kind of throw the basketball out and then it just rolls away and you never see it again. You're going to have that opportunity to, you know, know what it's doing, checking on it, you know, you know, looking at the finances, having some say in how the bylaws are, who's on the board? You guys are appointing, who's on the board, you know? So it's not like that initial board is going to be a makeup of some, you know, folks that have no connection at all to, you know, what your vision has been.
You just brought up something and can I piggyback on that? So if, if the city is collecting that, that fee and we're distributing that fee, why do we need a housing authority to pass it through?
So, so a couple of points to that, to answer the earlier question and then, and then come back to, to your question, Lori. First, you know, if, no matter what strategies we, we approve in the future, and it's still up to the council to decide what strategies they're going to utilize or give direction to the housing authority to actually implement. So for example, it was brought up, if, if there's a regulatory fee approved by the city, that's not approved and that fee goes straight to the housing authority, that fee comes to the city. And then the city would determine if they are going to allocate funds to the housing authority on an annual basis. Just like every council does every year, allocating funds for, for different purposes to that housing authority to be able to implement something like a down payment assistance program or long-term rental incentive program or any of the strategies we'll be talking about in the future. Dan, do you want to kind of get into a little bit more detail about why the housing authority is, is a strategic mechanism to go through for some of those strategies? We are going to talk a lot about that in the workshop, but we can jump into some of that.
I'd rather not jump into that until I, I got to have another question before we get into that. I know we're going to talk about that later. So Mary Elizabeth, you were talking about how we appoint to the board, but that's just the initial appointment. Or is every appointment done? That's my, because when we talk about losing control aboard, you know, if we're not appointing, we only have control at the first initial appointment. Is that correct?
So that is correct. I wanted to back up for just a second to give one other reason why you'd form the authority that it has a power that you, you as the city don't, is to be able to own and manage real property as far as the housing projects. So that's, that's just one other reason for doing it. But to your question, I was just looking at the statute and 29 dash four dash 208 actually allows you to remove commissioners if they're not meeting their duty or have committed some sort of violation of the, you know, mission statute or bylaws or mission of the housing authority. So after that initial board, no, you're right, you don't have direct appointment powers, but you do have the power to remove commissioners.
And we can require that certain amount of number of counselors are on the.
Yeah, because I know initially my thought was, you know, we were initially said, oh, well, your full council could be the full board. And I said, I'm not comfortable with that. But when we talk about, according to Lori's point, you know, if we lose control over, you know, what type of homes or what type of developments are coming in, that's a concern. One other concern I have reading this is, I just wanted some clarity on it. I know you guys had a petition of 25. And am I correct in saying if we both know on this, then you said something about them being able to take it to ballot?
It is a ballot.
I guess my understanding of reading our charter is that you have to have 15% of the last votes to be able to have a petition, which would be.
This is governed by statute though, not the charter.
This is a statutory process?
Yes.
The whole, like, none of this is baked in any of our municipal code or charter. This is specific to statute that, that garners one's ability or a municipality's ability to create a housing authority.
Okay, that answers my questions. Anybody else have other questions before Dan gets into some of the?
Yeah, I think I have kind of a two-part question. It starts with Lori, like what, what are some of your concerns that might happen with people? And with Mary Elizabeth saying that we have the power to remove commissioners, is it within the statutes? What, what violations have to occur?
That's, that's correct. This is a statutory animal all around, as Dan was saying. It's, it, it would not like, it doesn't then, once you appoint that initial board, then start falling under your charter for boards and commissions. It actually stays always under the statutory.
So I was wondering what some of Lori's concerns were and if, if the statute addresses removing that person, if your concerns come to fruition.
The biggest one really is, and it's probably philosophical more than anything. I still don't believe that when we talked about the community plan, that we framed the questions. And at the time, I don't think we did it on purpose. I think, you know, the general question is, you know, is there a lack of affordable housing? Do you want affordable housing? Everybody's going to say, yes, they want affordable housing. I don't know that we ever said, this is what this could look like. So we're going to take five acres and we're going to put a density of 10 years to the acre. And you're going to have to go through the housing authority and you get vouchers. And that's going to be, you know, single family, single parent incomes. It's going to be elderly fixed. It's probably going to be disabled, which, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that, but I.
Lori, I just want to, I think, I'm going to interrupt for just a minute because I think you're thinking more of federal housing authorities and programs through section eight and HUD. This is not that.
I, I, but so you're saying there's no way a project like that could come in and say, a group could come in and say, hey, we're going to use these tax credits and we're going to run it through the Grand Junction Housing Authority. And we're going to operate something like Radican Towers or Walnut Park. You're saying that, that there's no way that that can happen.
That's a different animal. And remember, any of these applications that come in, if it's something that the housing authority is looking at first, for instance, to recommend maybe to CHAF for tax credits or not, that is still a land use application that has to get approved by council. It's not like the authorities over here approving things and then just saying, oh, okay, here you go, city of Fruta. You've got to, you know, have this housing project that we just approved. It's not going to, you know, work like that. I mean, there will still be the land use process.
I just wanted to, and I completely agree with that, but like the city of Grand Junction.
Right.
I thought they were going to take over operations of such projects that are using tax credits. So we wouldn't have to manage them after the tax credits expired 15 years.
Part of the, part of the reason or part of the reasoning for creating the housing authority is to take it, have a more preemptive approach that essentially details whether or not we're even open to those, those types of developments. So remember, in the packet, it, like, we have, we have two different standard approaches, right? We've got this sort of amassing of scale, right, with, that is, the, this typically used with tax credits to bring 50 to whatever number of affordable units between 30 to 60% of AMI. I mean, that's what you're talking about. And everything that we've proposed, the staff's proposed in the, in the packet for discussion for the workshop is a very much more incremental type of approach to housing attainability. It's the singular unit, by singular unit. And so that's really what is being proposed is, is not a.
Dan, I have no idea what you just said. I'm sorry. Can you put that in layman's terms?
Sure. So, so if I, if I'm right in hearing what, what Lori's saying is that she's concerned about the, the kind of congregation of housing developments in totality with this project, this development is all affordable housing. And that this authority would be used to advance that particular type of approach to a housing affordability. Is that correct?
I don't know. I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
I think some of the.
If I could, oh, sorry, Matthew.
I think some of the confusion, when we started on this path, talking about a housing authority, we talked to CHAF and all those, and they talked about these projects. I understand staff has said, no, that's not what we want to do. We have this other concept, creative concept over here. And in order to do that creative concept, we need to have a housing authority. But I don't see anything here that says this housing authority can only do this type of project. We may start off with that intent, but two years from now, three years from now, when we're not on here, you may no longer be here, we don't have the control over that board and they may switch directions. And now we potentially have a housing authority, which has a fair amount of money, which doesn't have direct responsibility to the citizens of the community. Is it getting closer? Did I carry it too far?
No, I think that's very close because what I, what I understood is that the housing authority gives you every option to put in whatever capacity that looks like. I didn't, I've never heard you break me out as you can do federal housing projects. I've never heard you say that up until this point.
We can't, so I said, I disagreed with the assertion that this, that the city of Grand Junction could come and propose, or the Grand Junction Housing Authority could propose a development in Fruta. We thought that at the outset, but that turned out to not be.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that there cannot be people on the housing authority board that says, we want this type of subsidized housing because I don't know, they've got a vested interest in it in some capacity.
So.
So they push something through like that and then the Grand Junction Housing Authority manages.
But you still have 100% land use control.
Yeah. So what Mary Elizabeth's saying is just because you create the housing authority, doesn't mean that they can then decide later to do li tech projects on behalf of the city, the cities, we still have the land use control over that.
We've also changed our code to allow higher density to allow some of these things. And there's always the PUD route, which we saw.
But those projects are much more than a, a PUD. They require the city to waive certain fees. They require the city to agree to quite a few things to actually work with CHAF to go through. So it's, it can't be done on its own, is the way, it has to still have the bodies agreement. And one of the discussions we want to have with you tonight is how, one, whether we do them or not, it can be the group that actually bets those projects on behalf of the city based on the goals that the city has and the funding that the city's approving for specific strategies and goals. Right now, it puts you in a really awkward position because you have the land use piece going through. But then those types of projects, they have to have city approval as well or have the backing of a housing authority to, to go through the CHAF process, right? To actually, from the CHAF being the Colorado Housing Finance Authority to receive those, you know, low income tax credits or li tech credits for, for these projects. And, and it, you know, one of the things that, that we wanted to talk about in the workshop is essentially there are a number of strategies, we've gotten a lot of feedback from you on, and there are some that we've talked about, but we don't really have. We have recommendations, but we don't have feedback from council on. But it could very well be that we want to entertain certain li tech projects if they meet certain goals, that we don't want to entertain any li tech projects at this point in time. And, and as you work to create the bylaws and appoint people on the housing authority that, and the funding that gets, is given to them, that can be, you know, dictated or determined. It's to achieve these things, to achieve a down payments assistance program and a long-term rental. And that's it at this point in time, or, or, you know, other pieces. And then when those projects come through, we need to know, have a, have a policy and city philosophy on, on what we do. have a, have a policy and city philosophy on, on what we do, because we're in this weird limbo when projects are going to be coming through before we have an authority up and going, where these projects are, hey, we want city approval, but we're not ready um, from a staff standpoint to, to, to fully back some of these, uh, projects that, and not any in particular, just in general, those like that, that have these long-term fifteen to thirty-plus year, um, impacts. I mean, it may, yes, it may meet a need at the moment, but how are they going to be funded over time? How are they going to maintain those, uh, credits? Who's going to manage them? Who's going to? And we are not, right now, we are not recommending, uh, going down a long path of, of those types of strategies as much as we are uh, a few strategies that, that are in the white paper that, that we have in the, in the packet later. But I think just to make sure, um, that Mary Elizabeth and I were just discussing, make sure that we get that on the record and, um, are in agreement that creating the housing authority doesn't mean that they can, they can essentially just go rogue and do those types of projects without the city's backing to do a low income tax credit project in, in the city. It's not the mechanism of the how, creating a housing authority that automatically approves any of these strategies that, that we're doing. There is a connection from the city, uh, to, for that group to be the group that, um, is able to help implement, help, uh, you know, essentially you'd be appointing experts in housing to that, to be able to vet, uh, some of the projects or just manage the, the, the two or however many strategies we determine that we're working on. But you're right, like anything council does, the future council can change it. Whether you do it now or you don't do it now, that, that is always a reality.
But that one's one that we just, we just were told, we can't, once we set up this housing authority, it's its own legal entity to make changes to the bylaws. So even though we say we have these two funding up mechanisms right now down the road, a new, uh, how, the housing authority could change with members that say, oh, we want to add this to it. Are, are you guys saying that a hundred percent of the funding is coming through the city? So we have a hundred percent say on what we fund?
Now, over a number of years, and over a number of years, they, they could, other means of fi- of finances to employ in certain ways, correct? They would still need the city's approval for these types of projects you're talking about. They can't just do them without the land use control.
So the, the other thing that is, I think, because I'm having a hard time understanding the connection between the two different types of funding sources and the transfer fee. I mean, the transfer fee is justified by the transaction. It's got to go back into transactions. You know, I don't even know if we're able to use that to, uh, stand up tax credit development. It has never been studied to, to be supportive because it's based off of the indirect, indirect impact of that transaction. Not to go build something different.
Yeah, correct.
I'm not, I mean, like, I fail to see the connection there because it's about mitigating, uh, impacts that, that close gaps by transactions taking place that are above a percent, a percentage of AMI, all while supporting the effort of gaining access to others by offsets through down payment assistance. So it's not by like taking in transfer fee dollars as a pass through from the city and then go building something that, that could be fifty units of a, of a development, so to speak. Like it's about offsetting the transaction. I mean, that's how it's been couched the, the whole time is that those, that those dollars have to get plowed back in with immediacy.
So let me ask this question. So we say it has to go through land use and all that. So it meets all of our current code. There's really nothing council can say, correct? If they're meeting the eight units per acre, up to eight units per acre, that you, that housing authority, whatever development came in, would go through, correct? If it wanted to go above that, I think according to Lori's point, we couldn't, we couldn't allow that, or we could, we'd have to allow it as a PUD or as some other.
I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, that, if there, that there are light tech projects that can be eight units per acre or less.
They have to, they have to go through density bonus.
Yeah, they have to.
Public hearing process and like, those are not by right, you know? I mean, like the, the, uh, they have uh, statements in the code that say up to or by right, you know, you can have, you know, residential, residential attached. But we also have residential design standards that those, you know, seven to eight dwelling units an acre were the topics that we've talked about in the past with trail connections or attached units or, uh, uh, even feathering or buffering with, uh, with density. I mean, it's in there. It's just like, it's not in there with a PUD because you're writing your own standards. So if you'd like to revisit those, um, we certainly can, but anybody can propose a PUD and deviate from the codes. And really, anybody can provoke, uh, propose an affordable housing development too. There's nothing that prohibits that from happening. It's, the, the thing that prohibits that is if you have strategies that are different than the ones that are being proposed that require your involvement as a municipal government. And if you're only going to be involved in a specific way, uh, and, and those are proposed before you, they might not fill your charge of what you're trying to do. And I think that's where the sweet spot is, or that's at least what we're trying to, uh, accomplish is that, you know, we don't want to do all things to all people with a, a specific amount of, of dollars. Like the goal is to do a few things really well that are different than how other people have been approaching this type of effort. I mean, that's what, that was the outset of this entire.
And I think the basis of why we started this is absolutely not really amazing ideas. Just, I, I, I don't know. I'm not going to be around for much longer and I'm afraid of what it could turn into. So that's.
Anybody else have any questions?
So we're just creating it on paper tonight. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding everything. We're just creating it on paper tonight. We have, we appoint the initial board. We can figure, figure out how many people from council we want to appoint to the actual board. We can have a say in creating bylaws.
And you can wait however long you want to appoint those board members to.
Once it's created, it's created, it's a new governmental entity.
Correct. There's, but there's no board members.
No, I understand.
But so hang on, I'm not done yet. And so the, once the board is created and the bylaws are established, that new board can change any of those bylaws and we have no say over that? Or will we always have say in those bylaws?
Technically, sure. Technically, yes, they could change those bylaws.
Mary Elizabeth, there's people online. Could you get the microphone, please?
Thank you. Um, technically, yes, that board could change those bylaws. Uh, but again, I think, um, you know, that's where putting two council members on, you know, the board, you can, you keep that in check, you know? Um, so I, I, I totally understand. It is a little weird and maybe seems, um, kind of a little scary to create something that, you know, you're kind of floating back out there and you don't have the ability to pull all the way back or to completely control. But again, um, I think your, your biggest control factors are that you control the land use process. That is a public hearing process. That is something that every single project has to go through. Nothing can, nothing can slip by, you know, over here with the authority that you guys wouldn't have control over hearing, you know, making sure it meets either code, hearing public comment, deciding whether or not it's, you know, the right thing for the city. So.
That was my last point. So the, the checks and balances are however many council people we put on the board. And then it all goes through land use code, planning commission, city council.
Correct.
So I, I guess I feel like, I mean, I'm not disregarding, you certainly have so much more experience at this and so probably justifiable reasons to be worried about how all of the things that could go bad than I do. So I'm, you know, I'm hearing what you guys are saying and, and being respectful of that. I don't, for me, it doesn't warrant, all the possible hypotheticals that could go wrong, don't warrant not getting it started. Because for me, the, the, the end goal of trying to have people who work here be able to live here is, is our goal. And yeah, everything could go to hell in a handbasket overnight, but, um, it, it sounds like as many steps to safeguard as we can possibly take, we're taking and we always know what our goal is. Our goal, city council could change, you know, goals could change, but I don't, um, I mean, I'm trying to balance like your real concerns with, they're also hypotheticals. So I, I, I guess I want to get started with it and, and see what we can do.
Kyle? I was just going to say, I also think that this gives us an opportunity, knowing that as we do move forward and there will be a different council, you know, in a, in a few months, and then again in a couple of years and so on. This kind of gives us an opportunity to have a little bit of a say in how this comes to fruition as opposed to if it happens four years from now, maybe none of us are sitting here. I won't be.
You keep reminding us.
I guarantee you that. But this, this gives us an opportunity to have a say in what it looks like. And even if we were to vote no, as I understand it, could be put on the ballot and could be voted yes that way. And even if it was voted no, then I think it could still come back around with another petition and.
Just, just to add to that, because you're headed, I mean, just so everybody understands, if you were to vote no tonight, um, it could, as Dan indicated, um, get on a ballot. Also, there's just a three-month waiting period and twenty-five people could come back to petition for a public hearing again. So even if it doesn't get on the ballot, you just have to wait ninety days and there can be another petition. So just to, you know, Kyle's on the right track there that, you know, it could happen whether or not you guys, you know, were the, the council to vote on it or not. Um.
My question on that related to cows is, I didn't see the petition language in any of this information. Isn't that on the petition? Yes. Because if we vote no, that's what's going to be put on the ballot, correct? Doesn't the petition language have to be put on the ballot as presented for those signing it?
They, they would have to be a petition, another petition to put it on the ballot. Sorry.
And my computer just died, so I can't pull that statue up right now.
Any other questions while they're looking for that?
No, but I just, uh, like I said, I, I'm not going to vote no on it, but I just want, I wanted my voices or my concerns, you know, in the minutes and I wanted just like who's left to really think about what you're doing. And it's been my experience, anytime that there's this kind of money on a board that people have access to, you get people with an agenda. So I'm wide open.
What I think, I mean, are you guys still looking something up?
Yeah, you guys can go ahead and keep talking, Dan.
Uh, I think the, the best way for us to, um, handle the, these projects that might come down the line in the future is, is by continually reflecting upon the land use code. I know it's the last thing that Dan wants to hear right now after going through the process like we have, but is to stay on top of that. You know, the, the, the processes, I, as I understand it, after seven and a half years is it's not quite nimble enough to always keep up with every single project that comes through. And that's why there's so much frustration with, you know, certain developments and the public and among us is because the process really slows everything down on this end. But if you continually reflect upon the, the land, land use code, that's going to allow you opportunities to say like, you know, this is kind of a, a way that this type of project gets through that we're not looking for. But I think that's, that's really where the council has the most, most power. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I'll go back and answer the mayor's question. Um, if, if you deny the petition tonight and vote, voted no, then actually what happens is a whole new petition has to get circulated in order for it to get on the ballot. That petition has to be, um, signatures and residence addresses of registers electors of such city equal in number to not less than five percent of the votes cast for governor or for president and vice president of the United States at the last preceding general election. So it, so it's a pretty, I guess, you know, it's a different, so it's told, starts the whole thing over again, but through the citizens making the vote instead of council making the vote. Or as I said, the other option is if that doesn't happen, ninety days passes, twenty-five more people can file a petition to have a public hearing again like this. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions or thoughts? Dan?
No questions?
No thoughts?
Nope. Totally blank.
Anything else Dan wants to add? Before I call for a motion? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I will. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution twenty-two oh two, a resolution authorizing the creation of the Fruta Housing Authority.
I second.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cray?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
No.
Counselor Buck? Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes five one.
All right. Thank you, everyone. With that, that is the last item on our agenda. We are going to officially adjourn at six forty-seven PM.